Good, sorry, could everyone in the meeting please turn their camera on for the first minute or so as we've got a new live stream in client, so we need to check how that works.
Turn the camera off.
On please.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, morning, everybody. Thank you for your attendance. First item is apologies, Paul, I've got Tracy Shepherd substituted by councillor John Beaumont, and apologies from Nigel Mims and Becky Hale. Have we got any others?
Those are all the ones I have, Chair, thank you.
Okay. Next item is disclosure of pecuniary, non pecuniary interests. Does anybody have any, Keith?
Yeah, it's worth mentioning, I'm negotiating or talking to the CCG about new GP surgery in Weddington, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, going on to number three, which is my announcements. So officially a welcome to all our new members in the committee. And a big thank you, of course, for those members who have moved on to Pastures Green. If you're not aware, Margaret Bell is our new vice chair. As Claire Goldby has gone on to chair the Communities ONS. So a big welcome to everybody else who's new to the committee. At the last meeting on the 24th of June, we did have a few issues which were taken away for research by officers. Have members, Paul, received that information?
No, Chair, that's been received in the last few days, I can circulate it in writing afterwards if helpful.
Okay, well, just a quick note. We had an item on the county's COVID-19 recovery approach regarding the George Elliott Hospital, where positive patients were being dispersed to. The response from Nigel Mims was that, in fact, this concerned the Maitland and Ellen Badger beds. And the numbers up to the 13th of July, this is purely from George Elliott, of course, was 28. Patients were sent to Maitland or Ellen Badger. The other issue that was followed up, was to be followed up, was test, trace and isolate. This was the question why Nightingale hospitals had not been used to provide capacity at our existing acute trusts and obviously to isolate COVID patients. I had a response from Pete Sedgwick, and mainly the capacity was not required as we were able to meet the needs of Warwickshire residents within our own resources. And it was also taken into account that there were challenges around repatriation. But basically, we did not need to use Nightingale. We were able to resource everything from within our own needs. I've got one other item that I want to bring to members' attention, and that is that I have taken the decision that all future meetings of this committee, we will have a standing agenda item on COVID-19. The idea being, of course, that we will, members of the committee will then be briefed on the very latest information that is available. I'm sure we're going to have briefing notes available in the interim periods between our committee. But I think we need the item on there so that we can discuss, as a committee, any items that are of concern. So it will be on the agenda for all our future meetings. I hope that everybody thinks that that's a good way forward. Item two on the agenda, public speaking. We, oh, hold on, I've got a question from Pam. Yes, Pam?
Chairman, I think you're referring to the question I asked about, more about infection control, my question was, not about the actual use of the Nightingale hospitals. I mean, I know you know as well as I do, I'm a very old lady, but years and years ago, there used to be such a thing as an isolation hospital, which worked really, really well. Now, we have unprecedented times, a pandemic that we can't actually see the end of. And it's highly infectious, and I do not understand why, if we have Nightingale hospitals up and almost running, because they've been mothballed, we are not putting patients that have COVID in these hospitals so that they can be fully isolated and they have dedicated staff looking after them. That is the principle of infection control.
Okay. Made a note of that, and we shall pass that back for comment. Thank you. I was on to two, which was public speaking. We haven't got any, so I'm moving quickly on to our first main item for the purpose of this meeting. And that is COVID-19, the service changes. And we are going to receive an update and presentation from Coventry and Warwickshire Health and Care System. Now, I think this is being led by Adrian Stokes and Anna Hargrave. Are you both online, or?
We are.
Yes, we are.
Good, welcome to you. Thank you for coming along. Who's going to kick off?
I'm happy to kick off with a presentation, we'll try a different way around, last time Anna kicked off, so I'll kick off.
That's Adrian, isn't it?
It is.
Thank you.
If someone could pull up the presentation, that would be, that would be great. Is that you, Paul?
I'm trying to do the minutes, Adrian, are you able to screen share yourself, or?
No, I haven't got it with me, actually, so I thought you had it.
There we go, one second then, Adrian. Okay, let's have another look, see what I can do.
Paul, if it's in the shared file, I can share.
No, no, it's okay, it's okay as well, thank you, I'll deal with it, it's not a, thank you for your help, though.
I'll make a start anyway with some sort of background comments.
Hopefully, my screen will share in a second or two, I'm just gonna, I'm just in the document package, embed me a second, and I'll just get through to the item.
So in terms of the key bits today for the presentation, I was gonna go through four, four main issues, really. One, to give a bit of context around COVID and the NHS, we'll slow down, Paul, you're going already onto slide the next one. If okay, I'll kind of just say down the slide each time, that's okay. So give you a bit of background and the context of COVID and the NHS. As councillor Redford just said, we're still in COVID, and so that means some things about the way we respond. And we're not in a kind of normal position of recovered from something, and therefore we're in the recovery phase, we're actively working through this. I'd say something a little bit around governance, so how have we set ourselves up within the, within the context of health and social care work together, but also part of the wider system and the wider response to COVID and the ongoing recovery and reset that will go on for a number of, number of years. Thirdly, wanted to go on to look at the, what were the immediate priorities? So once we kind of got past the, we called Phase One, so that was the, we were over the main peak of COVID and the numbers were starting to come down. What was our Phase One priorities? And then what were our Phase Two priorities? And then towards the end, I'll talk a little bit about what we're expecting for Phase Three priorities as we move into winter. And then finally, try and sum it up with a number of key takeaway messages for people. And having done this presentation and a number of forums before, try and also pick up some of the questions that have previously come up and address them as I, as I run through the presentation. So if I could run on to the next slide, to go through some of the context that we, that we face ourselves. I guess the first obvious one is, is this, no, sorry, back slide. Slide two, please.
Adrian, sorry, is there multiple people sharing screens at the moment? Mine's on a different screen.
I was taking over, so you can do your minutes and stop.
Bless you, Isabel, most helpful, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Isabel, I appreciate that as well. So I guess the key bits in some of this, you'll realise, one is that, you know, COVID hasn't stopped. We've done the kind of test, track and trace things that are, that are going on, and the management of infection control within hospitals, and the kind of preparation for winter and what might be a second peak, continue to be the context within which we, we work. It's a, it's a point I've made on a number of occasions, but, but the stopping of services from a logistical perspective, from a kind of managing that was relatively straightforward, the restarting of activities with everything that's going on is incredibly, incredibly difficult. It's a, it's a comment I've heard of a number of hospitals where they've said, the hospitals look very much similar from the outside, but when you get inside hospital now, they're completely different to what they, they used to be. And some of that links into the kind of productivity challenges we have. So in most instances, when the NHS has faced a challenge around, you know, large scale numbers of patients needing to be seen, or large backlogs, or all those kind of things, the response has always been a productivity one. You can get more cases through a, through a theatre, or you can get more, a shorter length of stay within the hospitals. And you can bring on things like waiting list initiatives. Now, the need to kind of split between clean pathways and COVID pathways, the infection prevention control measures that need to be put in place. I mean, in some instances, our productivity can be down as low as 40% of what it was pre-COVID to manage that, and particularly in some key areas like endoscopy, which, which has major impacts on, on us. So our normal response of just increasing productivity is not one we have. And is a big reason why we've, we've done a lot of work in the independent sector. I think there's some, some real positives that's also come out of our initial response to COVID, but, but, but give us a good kind of heart to how we can work going forward on this. There's some of the partnership working that's, that's really strengthened, that works at real pace in the, in the COVID response is something we can take into, into the, into the future. So certainly some of the things around discharge pathways that we've, we've worked at speed with, with our council colleagues and the CCGs and the acute hospitals and the mental health hospitals, have done things incredibly, incredibly well. And things like use of virtual technology as well is something that we've, we've come together a lot quicker, and things that would have took a long time to, to manage happened almost overnight. I mean, who'd have thought, four months ago, we'd have meetings like this on Teams? And in terms of Coventry and Warwickshire, something like 80,000 GP appointments a month are occurring online, and that's something that's, we would only dream about, only pre-COVID. And so that, that kind of locking in of innovation, and after this presentation, Anna will hopefully take you through some of the, some of the things and the process we're doing to make sure we lock that in in the right way. So making sure we get the right engagement, making sure we go through the right processes, but also making sure where things have happened and are for the, for the, for the good of the health service and the good of the population, that we can keep those in a, in a good way. So that's the context of which we, we find ourselves, it's incredibly complex to manage. So moving on to the next slide. So as Chair of the Restoration Coordination Group, predominantly we're looking at this sort of bottom left hand corner here, so the, the Integrated Health and Care System element of the, of the wider piece of the COVID response. But you'll see from the governance side, I'm gonna go on to the next slide, what we've, what we've really tried to do is to kind of link a lot of this together. So this is a busy slide, and I apologise for that, but the, the key points from this are numerous. One is, we've got a number of expert advisory groups that we're using to help the system, provide the right advice to make sure we do the right response at the, at the right time. And to a large extent, these are groups that are already existing pre-COVID. So recognising we need to, we need to be in this for the long haul, we need to make sure that our governance is nimble enough and doesn't become so burdensome that it stops the work doing. It's also working with groups of people that have worked together for a long time and can strongly advise the group. So you'll see there, particularly the Prevention and Population Health Group, around stronger communities, which you will have heard from in the past, and, and it's helping us in that bit around, how do we engage with the community and how do we make sure all the people that need to influence the Reset Coordination Group can do? We've got some groups like the Primary Care Group. Primary Care Group was set up as part of the initial COVID response. I think met daily to look at the way primary care can respond, and has become an incredibly powerful group, and one that we've kept through this phase, and I think hopefully will stay as a feature of Coventry and Warwickshire for, for a long time to come. We've also, you wouldn't, won't be surprised, set up a new group around demand and assessment modelling. So it's a large piece of work, understanding what our capacity is, understanding what the current demand is, and understanding what the, the future demand is. And when I say understanding what the future demand is, I think we need to recognise that no one has a crystal ball in terms of what that will look like, so we need to be prepared for most eventualities. So there is a, there's a school of thought that says, we will have all the activity we've lost in the first three, four months come back as well as a normal level, and therefore we're going to expect a large wave of additional activity. There's also a school of thought that says our, our new level of activity will be lower than it was before COVID. And therefore, we got to manage and prepare for capacity scenarios around those, and working very closely with our provider organisations to make sure we have the, the right capacity. We also got a huge focus on place, so the most, vast majority of delivery around this in terms of getting service back on happens within our hospitals, within our providers, within GP practices, and, and therefore the focus on place is absolutely key. And then we bring all that together back through the Partnership Executive Group, which both Jill and I sit on. So that's the, that's the main issues of the governance, and I would, you know, leave you with one message, which is the membership of this stretches right across the healthcare system, the voluntary sector, et cetera. So everyone has a chance to make sure they, they input. And from your perspective, Nigel, Nigel Min sits on both the Reset Coordination Group and the Partnership Executive Group, and that also has a hand in place as well. So your representation there makes sure that your messages get fed into as part of the response from the, from the health service. I can move on to the next slide. So when we looked at Phase Two priorities about bringing things back online, we had a very clear set of priority areas with cancer being the most significant priority. As I mentioned earlier on, in Coventry and Warwickshire, we did very, very well at making really early use and maximum use of the independent sector. So it's that our waiting times for, for cancer services now are broadly back in line with what they were pre-COVID, which is a tremendous achievement, but we've used a lot of the independent sector to do that, and we're planning on continuing to use the independent sector through to at least March next year in quite some substantial, substantial ways. Following on from that is the urgent, the urgent treatments, those that are deemed injured by the hospitals. And then finally, starting to move into some of the long waiters. So that's the priority, or you would do your cancers first, then your urgent, then your, then your long waiters. And as we move into Phase Three, we'll, we'll start to see an attempt to bring more services back online so we can get into the, the challenge around what our waiting list profile looks like. I mean, in Coventry and Warwickshire, it was proud at the end of, end of last year to have no one that had waited over 52 weeks for any operation. And that's no longer the case, and we'll have to get back to that position as we bring services back online. You won't be surprised, and I'm not an expert on test, track and trace, and many of you in the, in the, in the virtual room will be, so please don't question me on this, because you have people that know this a lot better than me. But what we do know is protecting ourselves, making sure that the COVID peak, if it does come back, is, is lower and ideally doesn't come back. A lot of that falls down to the test, track and trace process and gives us the freedom to be able to respond to and bring back services online as, as, as we can do. Care Homes is obviously a, a key issue, and we've worked very closely with, with the councils, particularly in the CCGs, but across a wide range on that infection prevention work together. And we've got joint teams working across providers, commissioners and yourselves to make sure that we, we work very closely on that. And then a kind of a local priority we decided within Coventry and Warwickshire, over and above the immediate stuff that came out of the Phase Two Priority Letter from the national team, was around mental health. So a real recognition that, that the kind of tail of, of issues that might stem from COVID could be quite substantial and quite, quite, quite difficult. So there's not just the impact of COVID itself, but the impact on the wider determinants, on, on jobs, on incomes, on, on housing, on, on people that you know who've worked and worked in the acute sector, or people that have lost jobs. And so we do know the mental health impact is, is going to be substantial. So an early piece of work we've done with our mental health providers to bring it in, have a kind of a long term focus on mental health, and again, work very closely with you, with yourselves. If I can move to the last slide. I mean, these are the kind of, when I sum all that, there's obviously a lot in there, and, and the kind of key takeaway messages for, for me are, I think, one is, you know, just a recognition that all these phases are happening simultaneously. So we've, we've been through Phase One, which was managing COVID, well, we're still in managing COVID. We've been through Phase Two now, expected Phase Two, which is restarting services, but we, we still haven't restarted all services, that in itself is, continues to be a challenge whilst we've got COVID as well. And then we're running into the preparation for, for winter. So, you know, a key challenge for, for health systems is, is winter when COVID doesn't exist. So managing a winter where COVID does exist is, is, is one that we've got to, to work with. And, I mean, you may have seen in the national press that the Nightingale hospitals have been kept again until the end of March, so it becomes, becomes our emergency capacity should we need it across a, across a winter period. Partnership working, I think we've been incredibly good, and I'm incredibly proud of lots of work that most, most people in my CCG have done and across other organisations. And that's something I'm keen that we, we keep and we don't forget as we move into, into a new world. And then communication is really key. So every organisation is having some sort of restoration programme. And they're all, we need to make sure that whilst they all work within their own organisations, they're all linked in. So a large, large effort on our part to make sure we have the right people in all the right forums, so there's kind of read across between various groups. And also, let me take opportunities like this to, to explain the approach and get questions and make sure we get that, that tie in. So that, they're my takeaway messages, I don't know if Anna wants to walk us through the paper that sat alongside that, and then happy to take questions.
Yeah, sure, thank you, Adrian. And so in terms of the paper that accompanied this item, the paper sets out the context in which Adrian has done his presentation. So back in March, we were required, as in all areas, to undertake a number of service changes that enabled us to both protect our workforce and create capacity within the local system. So that resulted in kind of two key aspects, really, a lot of services were suspended. But for those ones that we did continue, we either did so via a different means, so for example, the independent sector, or using some of our community facilities, or we did them via other mechanisms such as digital, online consultations and so on, which have proved to be very popular. I think what we learnt through this process was that we are able to move very quickly, and we are actually able to transform our services. So that's been a key learning point for us as a health and care system. And what we're now doing, though, is, is understanding what the impact of some of those changes have been in terms of especially more of those transformational changes. So whilst it's great that we've accelerated our move to digital, we need to understand the impact that that has on our different communities, and whether that has created any inequity in terms of how people access services. So at the moment, we're going through a period of evaluation, understanding the quality and equality impact of these service changes that we have made in order to inform our plans beyond this initial restoration period. So we're very much drawing on the great work that Health Watch has done in terms of surveying the population and getting a sense of their experience of the services. But we're also doing some targeted work, especially with our seldom heard groups. And we've got our constant engagement team working with those groups, so working for the deaf community, for example. And I think that probably draws on the, the next part of our planning period, which wasn't particularly covered by the paper, but I think is pertinent in terms of us understanding the impact. It's not just understanding the impact of the service changes that we have made, it's understanding what we need to do now in terms of as we restore the services, in terms of addressing health inequalities and the equalities agenda. So one of the groups that was in Adrian's Governance Structure, Stronger Communities, you may have heard it called the PNP Group before, myself and Liz Galton, the DPH in Coventry Chair that group. We're looking at the needs of the population. So for those of you who were at the Place Forum, we have undertaken a needs assessment following COVID to understand what our likely needs are going to be, both in the short and long term. But we've also established a task and finish group, which is working across the whole system to understand the actions that we need to take in order to address inequalities as we move forward and the planning we need to do. So what do we need to do in the next three months, as well as the next 18 months, in order to reduce some of the inequalities that we've got in our system? So that's a really critical piece of work that we're doing at the moment. And further to that, we, like all other areas, are doing a lot of work with our workforce in terms of those people who are at risk, because obviously our workforce are our community as well, and, and actually being able to work with the people we employ is, is critical in terms of supporting our communities as well. So we're all undertaking risk assessments of those staff that are deemed in a net risk group. So it was just to give you some context, we're still very much in the, we need to understand the impact. Yes, we want to lock the changes in, but we are doing so in a way that reflects our need to both improve quality and equality as we, as we do that process.
Okay, Anna, thank you, thank you very much for that. We're now open to questions from members. Before I do that, I just want, I just noticed that we have in fact been joined by my opposite number, Joe Clifford of the Coventry Hosk, so just a welcome to you, Joe. So just a welcome to you, Jo, and hope everything is well in Coventry.
Thank you very much for that.
Helen. Okay, Jo. Helen.
Thanks, Wallace. Just, just a couple of questions, Anna, about what you were saying about locking in some of the changes. And I'm glad that you're thinking about quality and equality. My concern is that we, we might obviously want to lock in some of the changes, but we don't want to make it so that nobody ever goes to their GP again. And I'm just a bit concerned that, let's say for elderly people who've got that relationship with their GP, that that, that kind of relationship is, is still there and that's fostered. And also people with mental health difficulties, it's perhaps not the easiest thing to get, to go on a screen or just to talk over their issues on, on the telephone. So when you say lock changes in, what sort of percentage are you kind of thinking of? Or is that still all to be thought through yet?
I, I don't think we've got any idea on the percentage and that's not something that we're aiming for as, as a percentage. I mean, what you've reflected there was something that we've been told for a long time is that different people want different ways of accessing services. And I don't think that is going to change at all. I think what we've probably done is for those people who wanted digital access, so somebody like myself can now have it. And actually it is allowing, we still are able to deliver those face-to-face services. And I'm sure Sarah could talk about that in more detail from a GP perspective. But absolutely critical to this is being able to offer choice. And I think actually that's been one of the gains is that we do now have more choice in terms of how you access services, but it's, it's just making sure that we maintain that balance. And that's why we're talking to people at the moment around getting a sense of, you know, how many people do want to access it digitally and how many people want to go for face-to-face? And, and the circumstances might change in different scenarios for individuals. So there's no hard and fast rules here. And that's why the partnership trust in, in terms of the mental health services are also doing that evaluation. It's worked fantastically well for some people, not so well for others. And, and that's always been something that's in the system. So I think it's now about us finding the right balance.
Thanks. Thank you, Hannah. Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of points, kind of thank you very much for the presentation and, and the report. Really interesting stuff. I suppose my starting point is really, the, the biggest bit I took from that was 80,000 GP appointments done elsewhere. Not sure what over time span that was, whether that was just during the COVID period. What I didn't really get a feel for coming through the document was actually the impact on Coventry and Warwickshire residents. What has been the impact in the way of numbers? What is the waiting list on demand against capacity? You know, that, that sort of background detail, which is probably a bit too detailed for today. So one of the things, Mr. Chairman, we may want to consider is having two or three councillors drilling around this a little bit more separately. The biggest area which I sort of noticed going forward would be around stronger communities because we're going to have to live with, whether it's this COVID virus or another virus which is appearing at some stage. And there's a way about managing lifestyles and managing going forward while the NHS system catches up with that. So I'm interested in how the Health Watch survey information is being built into future systems. And then how you will actually sort of continue that, that work with building the voice of the patient, the voice of the community within that at the same time. I have got to stack more really, and that's why I, I would find a separate, smaller group probably quite useful as the chairman.
Thank you for that, Jerry. Yes, I've made a note of that. Margaret.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say that I love the phrase locking in innovation. I think that's really good. So brilliant. Just a few things to pick up. One of the things that occurs to me is that COVID has been so virulent that it's, it's actually in the hospitals. If there's been any weak spots, it's found it basically. So in terms of infection control, I mean, obviously we were at one side very concerned about the George Elliot. And I'm sure other hospitals have had challenges as well. So presumably things, new things have been put in place now because I know that hospital transmission is now virtually zero in our hospitals frankly. And I wouldn't want to lose that because even without COVID, we have hospital-acquired infections. So if we've now got really good systems of infection control, even, even so, I know Pam's got some questions about this, but if we have got as far as we can go, then please let's not lose it. You know, this is something really important going forward, COVID or not, we need to keep those things going. So I'm really, I'm really concerned that we don't lose that. I think the other thing is, I am like Jerry, very concerned, and I think Helen, about the, the demand versus capacity. And I was a little bit concerned with Adrian's presentation, that phase three, we're going to start looking at people who've got, already got over 52 weeks wait. And I, I really do think we need to understand this more and how are we going to catch up? And I know you've spoken about using the independent sector, what other strategies are there to get these people who've been waiting for operations for so long? Some of them will be almost not able to walk wanting hips and knees operations. And we just, just need to know a bit more about how many people are waiting and what are we going to do about it? And now my third, my third point really, and last point is about equality. And the other thing that COVID's done is it has highlighted health inequalities across the piece because it's hit those communities more. And it's about sections of society, obviously like the BAME community. But it's about different regions that we've got, that have got underlying health problems. And that for me is really important. And people have talked for years about addressing health inequalities and frankly, very little has happened. And I would like to think that if nothing else, you know, the silver lining of this terrible cloud might be that we can start to have a real strategy. And Chairman, I would like to suggest that at an appropriate point, a specific report comes back on how we are going, first of all, identifying the different types of inequalities and how, what's the strategy for addressing them? That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Keith.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we had a really good presentation to the Borough Council's health scrutiny from the George Elliot. And one of the big things that changed there was getting test results within two hours of COVID, which really then increased productivity of the hospital and really helped with infection control. Because obviously if you have to wait a day to know someone's status, it really does muck up your hospital. Where if you find out in two hours, it really helps. Are we getting close to having two-hour results or one-hour results across the whole system? Because that seems to be a massive step forward we need for winter. So actually we, we know where we are with people rather than having a long delay. Secondly, workforce, obviously people retire, it's been a very stressful time. But also we've got new people coming through universities and some of them have been temporarily used. So it'd be useful to know what's happening with the, the health workforce in Warwickshire. Thirdly, mental health is definitely a massive issue. Even myself, I notice you go through ways of being good, keen on your hour of exercise, to sort of being a bit down and a bit snacking and unhealthy. And actually, a lot of people who live alone, mental health has been an absolutely massive problem. So I don't think we've got any data on how many people have called for help and what the backlogs are on that. And finally, it's common theme, the actual health of our population, the diet and the exercise. And we shouldn't be blaming the people in the wards that have got poor diet and poor exercise. We should actually be saying we've failed to provide the encouragement and the, the means to improve. So particularly, I mean, for the Wenvox and the Abbey wards, have got lots of COVID cases and a generally an area of poor life expectancy and health. So in the final phase, the rebuilding phase, we need a massive emphasis on building the health and resilience of the population. So they're generally in a better place for whatever comes forward. Thank you.
Okay, Keith, thank you. Pam.
Thank you, Chairman. Could I just ask, at this moment in time, how many patients suffering from COVID do we have in our hospitals? So go on, give me the answer.
Across the three acute hospitals, as of this morning, it was four.
Just four? And how long has it been such a low number? I know we don't want any, but that's, that's a doable sort of figure. Now, how long has it been like that?
I, I would, I would hazard a guess at around about 10 days. I mean, I can dig you out, it's been quite low for a week and a half.
And so this makes me a little concerned when only four people across our area are hospitalized with COVID. I, I accept that there may be others that are not in hospital, but I'm talking about the hospital ones. I'm, I'm concerned at the slow rate of getting hospitals back to where we were. And if you are only, and I say that, and I don't mean it as only, there are four people across our area with COVID, why are we not focusing on getting everything back to normal, as normal as we're ever going to be at the moment quicker?
Okay, well, I, I'll ask Anna and Adrian to come back on the issues that have been raised in a moment. I've got one more speaker, Chris Bain.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Anna will be rolling her eyes now because she's heard me say all of this in a number of meetings. Excellent, excellent report and the recovery and restoration plan is really comprehensive and I think well thought through. I welcome the points that Margaret Bell made about equalities earlier. And I think that we do need to take it more seriously. And if I could make a plea that when we come back with a report on it and actually take some practical steps, that it covers both service provision and health outcomes. Because I think both matter and one does not guarantee the other. So I think it's really important that, that the report that come back does cover both. The second point I'd make is that when we talked to people in our survey, what they said was that they had loads and loads of information, but not an awful lot of communication. And so they actually found it quite difficult. One in five found it really difficult to keep up to date with the changes in information. And that may have been because they had barriers to communication. And, and people who are deafened have come up with a particular range of barriers. And people who are visually impaired are getting lots of written information, which is of, of limited value. So I think there are issues there about getting information out both in a timely way and in an accessible way. And I think there is a big difference between communication and engagement. And, and the final point I'd make, Chair, is, is about mental health. When we did our, our survey, 846 out of 1,103 put mental health as their top priority. And it's, it covers a range of things from people feeling isolated and anxious through to people, and I was looking at an Imperial College study this morning, people with long-term conditions. And their reactions to the pandemic have been extremely revealing, including their extreme anxieties about what would happen to them if they contracted it. So I think there's, there is a lot out there about that. And, and I think we do need to, to, when we are considering what we commission after the pandemic, we do, I think, need to recognise the legacy of mental health and mental illness. That will be there post-pandemic. And that some of that, a lot of those people will not be known to services already. And we will be needing to deal with them, I think, in, in a way that I think is sensitive to what they've been through during the pandemic. It's really important. This pandemic has not just emphasised existing inequalities, I think it's opened up new ones as well. And we need to, I think, respond to that in terms of commissioning for the legacy. So I hope that wasn't too rambling, Chair. Thank you for that.
That was very useful, Chris. Could I, would it be possible for you to share the results of your survey on, in particular on mental health with us?
Yes, of course, Chair.
If, if you could, then I could get it sent out to members of the committee. I'm sure they'll be very interested to see the results of, of that survey.
We'd be very happy to have a, a discussion at a future hosk about the findings.
Well, mental health is, is one of our regular agenda items. So I'm sure we are going, that will maintain in the future our particular interest in that subject. Before we go back to Anna and Adrian, just a couple of points. I, I think really they're, they really are covered by what's been said previously. But I am, I am concerned when, with the onset of winter with the influenza, because we do have an awful lot of people who die of influenza. And I, I don't think the, the general public realise how many people do die of influenza. And taking into account whether or not there'll be spikes affecting this country in COVID, do we have, you know, do we have the capacity with the use of the Nightingale facilities in, in staffing? You know, because I, I really would not like to see that our hospitals are denuded necessarily just to, just to bring the Nightingale hospitals back online. So over to Anna and Adrian.
So, well, shall I have a go at a couple of them, Anna, and then I leave all the tricky ones and difficult ones to you? Is that okay?
I don't know, it's dangerous deciding voluntarily to go second, isn't it?
So, so I, I mean, there was some really, really good, good questions throughout that. There was, there was, there was a strand of questions around, if you like, kind of performance data and, and things like waiting list numbers and a whole raft of things like GP appointments. I mean, I, I like the suggestion of having a, a separate session on that. Anna will know, as I do, because we sit on the Restoration Coordination Group together, we, we receive about a 40 slide deck of, of data that goes right down to individual specialties, broken down by hospital and looks at waiting lists in, in enormous granular detail and diagnostics by each individual condition, how long they've, they've waited. So, and, and this, and you know, there's some, there's some good news in there as well. So when we look at our cancer waits, that they're, they're back now at fairly good levels. And when our diagnostic, diagnostics that have waited over six weeks was around 50%. About four weeks ago, it's down to 14% and heading in the right direction. So a number of things have shown, shown some, some positive signs. I think the, the other really, really excellent question and one that we kind of have to, to really fully understand is that if we've got so few people with COVID in our hospitals, why, why is it so difficult to, to start up? And there's a range of, range of reasons for that. One is in order to have the ability to separate a COVID stream of patients and a non-COVID stream of patients and what that means you need to do in terms of your estate. Means you lose anywhere between 20 and 30% of your effective capacity for doing that. And Jill and I were, saw a presentation earlier this week, which is did a kind of international study of five different countries. And they're all arriving at a number of about somewhere between 20 and 30% of capacity you lose by having the ability to, to stream patients one way or the other. The second is the infection prevention control measures that Margaret was, was so strong on and saying we need to keep. That does slow things down. So things like donning and doffing between operations and between patients. And for certainly aerosol-generated procedures slows things down. And Endoscopy is the, the one that I've heard quoted the most. And it was UACW saying that they've lost up to 60% of the patients on any individual list just by needing to get that infection prevention control measures right. So those two things from a logistic perspective make it difficult. In addition to that, the, the emergency admissions that we, we have coming into our hospitals haven't stopped. So they slowed down a bit pre-COVID. But now they're running at about 120% of the level of pre-COVID. So we've got more emergency admissions coming into our hospital now than we did pre-COVID. So you can see how those three things all acting together make it difficult to get your routine elective work up and running at levels similar to what was happening before COVID. I don't know whether, when, when Keith had his session with, with George Elliot, whether some of that came up as well. I mean, the hospitals are very good at giving more, more, or kind of absolutely real, well, this is the list I did this morning. or kind of absolutely real, well, this is the list I did this morning type um discussion. But those three things, that the separating of the streams, the IPC and the emergency activity that continues to come through uh have a have a huge impact on our ability to get elective activity up and up and running. Um, I mean, you know, when you think four patients, it doesn't sound a lot, does it? But but being ready uh to keep the stream separate is a is a huge impact. And then there's a whole load of difficult questions, which I'm going to hand over to Anna.
Sorry.
I don't know how we would F that. Lots of inequality, which is, which is, you know, I I would know you're all over from within, certainly within your group with Liz.
Yeah, so absolutely. So the inequalities and and mental health are, I think, were the other two key themes that that came out of that. And and how do we support people? And I think one of it is that we're trying to really be careful not to jump to conclusions to what the answer is and take time to listen to the people that um are um we need to um support and provide services to. And certainly last week, I spent some time talking to Chris um about um how we work with Health Watch and how we work with the voluntary and community um organizations to enable us to do that. Because with the best will in the world, sending our teams out to go and speak to people doesn't always give us the right answer. So we're thinking about how we work with those organizations to do that. I think what we're absolutely clear is that the way that we have been talking to our population and the way that we've approached it, uh we can't assume that doing the same will will deliver any better result than we've had before. So this is an opportunity for us to reset how we do um how we communicate um with um our communities as well. And I think actually the the role of the voluntary and community sector in this is absolutely critical. And obviously, they have been particularly hard hit through um the last couple of months in terms of funding and and so on. So it's how do we forge a new relationship with those organizations to support our communities? Because it's those groups who will be better able to support the communities um in in the kind of in the local area than can, in essence, the big organizations. And it's how do we work with those organizations to reach out into those communities um is the big challenge that we've got at the moment. And I think, again, it's it's, we have to bear in mind that actually we don't need to overlay our own assumptions onto some of our communities in terms of what will uh motivate them to start exercising and so on. We absolutely need to take the time to talk to them, to understand what is going to work. Um, otherwise, we are um not going to make progress.
Thank you, Anna. Margaret?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to go back on infection control and and just share my reaction to what Adrian's just said. Um, I'm I'm absolutely sure that what he said is very accurate. I'm really concerned about what used to happen before now in terms of infection control. If we're losing, uh I don't know, more than fifty percent of capacity because we're now more effective in infection control, then it's very worrying about what used to happen before. Um, as I say, Covid will will find any weakness. So I personally wouldn't want to go back to what we used to do before because we are then liable to get other infections, and maybe we did. I I don't know. But so what my question really is, are there, is the scope for more innovation in the way we do infection control, which is just as effective as what we do now? Because I don't think we can carry on losing fifty percent of capacity, but we don't want to lose the effectiveness of the infection control that we've got. So we have got a real conundrum there, and it would be great if anybody's got any ideas, because certainly I haven't. Okay.
Did you want to come back, Anna?
Um, well, no, I I think I I think any advance was, you know, infection control or obviously something we should keep looking at, and this is going to make people look, isn't it? I mean, I I don't, I I having worked in a hospital before in terms of this, things like the segregation and and various kind of cohorting of patients. This is the first disease I've known where you've had to kind of completely separate entire pathways. So you, you know, you arrive in A and E now, and there's a there's a route where you may have Covid. You go down a route where you don't have Covid. I, you know, I I I can't see that happening for something like flu. Because it would just become, but um, or possibly it could, but it certainly wouldn't have done prior to Covid.
Thank you. Keith?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I think what Margaret's talking about is really important. And I think maybe as a session or paper or something on the changing infection control. I mean, our thinking and needs scrutiny was all about separating three to four streams. Um, and those small side rooms you put people in until they've had the two-hour turnaround test result. So um I know it's an area which is very touchy, and I know the hospital doesn't want to um give too many details about all the things that have gone wrong. But I think we do need to learn the lessons, and it had been a remarkable transformation. You know, if we've got only four people in hospital and no hospital-inquired infection for two weeks or three weeks, whatever, we've made a ginormous change, and I think it will help with things like the flu and things because that is another big killer of the vulnerable. So I think there are lessons from infection control we need to learn, and I think we need to know a lot more about it. Um, and a lot of infection control seems to be an inflammation management exercise. It's actually not just medicine, it's actually then knowing the history of where everyone's gone and what goes on. And the sort of post-mortem instance to when things go wrong. Yeah, this person moved into this ward, and then we moved into this side ward. That was actually then thinking about it and the um the sort of um post-mortem effectively, what went wrong in the past, actually then learns as to why we do things a better way. If you look at the airline industry, they do a lot of post-mortem data, things that have gone wrong, which is why actually it's a very, very safe industry. And I know hospitals and medicines are safe industry as well. But I I I think doing more on infection control would be a really good thing to know about and to think about. Because it won't just be the Covid deaths, it will actually solve a whole lot of other infection control problems.
Thank you for that, Keith. Joey?
Yeah, thanks. The infection control is really, really important. And I echo what everybody's said about infection control. But I suppose the area um leading from that is around Anna's bit, which is stronger communities really and within the community, because we're going to have to live with this virus or other viruses and other stuff going around. So there will be other infections. So Keith's right, the air industry is very good at what it does when it analyzes stuff and and the NHS and hospitals and that, and that side will always have to be doing that. But actually, within the community and where we live and what we do with mental health and everything else actually is probably where we can have a great impact. So the innovation, I think, which Margaret sort of talked about as well, is possibly what can we innovate as local authorities working with NHS and other partners in 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 our communities, you know, from parish councils all the way through to elected members and 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 down to voluntary community sector. So probably one of the tricks is, is how do we connect the voluntary and community sector into doing some of that infection control within communities and actually trying to get communities to do a self um self-circulatory and infection control management, you know, it's all going back to the basics, again, of washing hands and all this sort of stuff, really. And so there's a twin-track approach, there's that high-level infection control, hospital, acute trusts, and and that that will be um I'm sure driven at at some speed. The bit that concerns me is the investment that that is then needed actually back into communities. So within to families, into the mental health services in the communities to actually do the infection control on the ground. And then that comes back to Chrissie's point, what was in the survey about equalities and the differences within within communities. And that's going to be a much harder task, because unless we can actually sort of get some improvement around that, right? Yeah, as was put on the first slide, the classic, you know, stuff about communities. And unless we can actually do deal with some- laws be there, and the laws get better, but the laws have to be there. And in fact, it's coming upstream all the time, really. So that's the bit, really, that I suppose as a local authority, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, what is it that can we integrate? And that's why I'm interested to see what actually is the impacts going forward? And how can we trick some of that money into the um into communities to deal with some of that?
Thank you for that, Joey. Um, uh, before I ask Anna or Adrian to come back, uh, I've got one more. Kate?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, Adrian, you said, you said in uh just previously that there wouldn't be the same pathway for flu. But whilst Covid is still around, surely uh when you arrive at hospital, if you have flu or Covid symptoms, which initially are quite similar, wouldn't that pathway be the Covid pathway to to, if you like, eliminate it? I I I-
Yeah, so I I I probably wasn't as clear as I I meant about. I was I was suggesting in a pre-Covid world, the idea that we'd separate our A and Es for flu in a price that it just wouldn't have happened, and the capital investments and all, all that. But I think you're absolutely right. As we run into winter, we need to get all our pathways and streamings in A and E as as fit as possible and um, you know, recognize the difference between flu and potential Covid is going to be an absolute challenge at the front door. And picks up on on Keith's comment earlier around, you know, how quickly can you can you work out where where someone is? Because the, you know, the streaming is one thing, but the worst thing an acute has from a logistical perspective is streaming when you're not quite sure which stream they belong in. Um, so there will definitely be streaming going into into winter. The the point I was making was more pre-Covid, we we hadn't even considered that segregation of pathways for for flu or something like that. And I think that lends itself to Margaret's question about future innovation and learning from this and getting stronger going forward.
And presumably, there'd be some element of triaging before anyone, if you like, turns up at hospital.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, Anna might know a little bit more on this, but the, you know, some work with 111 now around um. I I think it's called Talk Before You Walk, uh, as a kind of a, as a as a strategy, which says actually you need to phone to make sure you're arriving at the right place in the right stream. And the bit that can be done over the phone first is is better than everyone just arriving at A and E and then finding out. Um, I think there'll be a big national push on messaging around flu immunization and 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 use of 111. And then locally, I think we need to make sure that it it lands well, it lands well in the right place. It's um, it kind of hits the right communities in the right way that those messages land. I think that's down to to us to get right.
Thank you.
Anna's nodding. I've done well there. Anna nods. I I always think I've done well.
Okay, Pam?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I do understand what you say about the pathways within the estate. Um, but I think it really goes back to my point about if, I mean, as far as I can understand, you've got two ways of getting a diagnosis for um Covid. You either think that you have it and you've got bad enough to take yourself to A and E, or you're at home and you're diagnosed with it and you're taken in on a nine 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 call. Is that correct?
Um, I I'm not sure. I don't think the advice is to go to A and E necessarily. Um-
I mean, if you had great breathing difficulties and you had a fever, my understanding is that you you call um, what is it, 111? And then they might say, go to A and E.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Uh, uh, in the other case is you are either phone 999 and because you're so bad, or somebody decides to do that for you. So you've got your two ways of going to A and E. At that point, nobody knows really whether you have Covid or not. So when you get to A and E, you, how are they dealing with it at this minute? I understand what you're going to say, you know, in the wintertime towards the autumn, that pathway will be more active because I would hope that anybody with a flu-like Covid um symptom would go on the Covid pathway. But why are we not now, at this stage, getting ready to anybody who has those sort of system symptoms when they phone 111 or a 999 issue? They are not being directed, and why are we not opening up these um Nightingale hospitals even for a small amount of patients? We cannot, with this type of very virulent infection, we can't afford for anybody to take the chance of going into an A and E department, even though within that A and E department, you may have two different pathways. And also, if you're not using those pathways, then you have the capacity for the for the, shall we say, getting back to normal? Because you've got that, you've got that pathway that goes straight to Nightingale. I mean, if the person hasn't got Covid, then good, we can put them back in the 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 general hospital. But it just seems a just a loophole, if you know what I mean, that this virus can actually get through. It might be quite a small loophole, but at this moment in time, we do need to try to stop those loopholes. Am I making myself clear?
Well, you are. And I I I guess my fear is I I give a surface-level answer, and actually, someone who worked in an A and E department could give you a a much clearer response on the on the the, you know, the kind of level of the detail. I mean, I guess the bit that that worries me more is is the sort of asymptomatic patients that arrive at A and E with a, you know, so my son fell off his skateboard the other day, and we had to we had to go there, you know, and and I'm I'm hoping he hasn't got it, but he's completely asymptomatic, and therefore A and E was the right place for him to to go. So I think that's a, that's a question I I I worry about. In terms of the IPC, there are some great minds working on this, and the, you know, the the kind of ops directors and coos of the of the Q hospitals know that. And the question around the Nightingale is 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 also a good one, and and, you know, nationally, they've made that procurement. And we we we're operating under a Level Four national response, which says we kind of, we can influence, but we're waiting for decisions on what the operating protocol for that will be, whilst at the same time making sure we we've got the staff to, you know, we we don't have-
I mean, I I agree with you with what you're saying about uh patients that are asymptomatic because we don't know enough about this uh disease at all. I mean, it's in the very early stage of research, and uh it's difficult. I don't think we've come across anything quite like this that has, I don't, you either got a patient that's got symptoms or you've got a patient that hasn't got symptoms, and that is a, that's a big hurdle to go through. And it is difficult in A and E, I do accept that. But we have got to work out a system because we cannot, you know, we don't know how long this is going to go on for. We haven't found a cure for flu yet. There's no guarantee that there'll ever be a cure for this. And so we could be faced with a situation, however big or small, every single year, and you don't even know that it's only ever going to be at wintertime. It could be any period during that when you could get a really big spike. And we can't then uh have our other services within hospitals that treats all sorts of very important conditions, cancer, whatever you want to call it. You know, we've got some really horrible conditions that we need to keep under control. And we can't every year drop it by fifty percent. So we've got to work out something.
Yeah.
And the sooner we get a clear idea of how we are going to manage these patients, not not once they're in hospital, but the minute they step through the diagnostic door, if you like, we have, we've got to separate them, whether they've got flu or not. That's what we have to do. Uh, because otherwise our capacity is going to constantly be dropping by fifty percent. I'm sorry, it sounds as you-
Uh, I think you've made your point, Pam.
I'm sorry.
I've got one more um speaker um in Joe Barker, uh, and then we shall, I shall draw it to a close uh and move on. So, uh, Joe?
Uh, morning, all. Um, just picking up on something that Pam said. I think probably our major problem is that we've got into a loop where we aren't quite ready to understand how we're going to manage living with either this virus or any other kind of pandemic. And people have not actually accepted that we may just have to live with it in whatever form that is. But there are some, there's a couple of things I want to raise. One, which I think is a potentially a good thing, and I noticed that- One, which I think is potentially a good thing, and I noticed that, I think it was Sarah raised in the chat about don't forget the primary care route. Absolutely don't forget the primary care route because that, what's happened in my, from what I've seen is that people are using the primary care route much more carefully. There are not as many stubbed toes waiting on a Monday morning to go and see people because actually to see the doctor because they've got a hangover. People are being more reasonable in their use of the NHS. And if we can, that's one of the things I think we need to capture. The corollary of that, of course, is that there are people who are too frightened to go with symptoms. I understand that, but also some of the time wasters are, are, are no longer taking up the time because there's, there's no need for them. So that's a positive thing and therefore that frees up more space in primary care. Second thing, I'm very keen on the reset element of this because I'm bored frankly with where we're at. Yeah, been there, done this, been around it several times. Sorry, that sounds dreadful, but you know, I'm sure there are plenty of other people on this call who feel like it. And one of the, another big bonus that could come out of this is that we have learnt a lot about integrating health and social care. And that is really the gold standard of what we need to be aiming for. I know that it's what the NHS wants. It's what loads of us who are involved in many, many levels of this want to see. And now is the time that we will be able to, I hope, to reap it. But again, that's about where my thinking stops on it. I, I, I hope, rather than knowing how to. And I, but I think that we have got that golden opportunity. And I suppose the final thing that I think we've really missed a trick on, and I, I don't quite know how we're going to crack this one because testing has been hit and miss frankly. And we've changed how it's done and where you go and who can go and all that kind of thing. So people don't know. And I think one of the things that we lack is a huge amount of certainty. So if we could persuade more people to get tested, so that they knew with, with whatever, is it about 98% accuracy for a proper positive at the moment? I, I'm not sure. But then that also is the thing that would give, give confidence. And then people will feel that they can go into hospital or can visit A and E or can actually go and have the treatments that they need. Thank you. I don't think I asked any questions there, forgive me. Except for the social care.
Did you want to come back at all, Anna, Adrian?
No.
No, I don't, I, I agree.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, I've got, I've made a note of a number of issues that members have made, in particular from Gerry, Margaret, Pam and lately Joe. And I'll draw them together and we shall move forward on some of those issues as soon as we can. We are asked to note the presentation and report. I think we all agree that we've, we've had a good report from Anna and Adrian. And just asked you to agree in note and presentation and we should be following some of the issues up. Oh, I've got a late caller, Mike.
No, just a green wallet.
Oh, okay, Mike, you've jumped the gum, but that's good enough. Are we happy to note and present the, and the presentation? And our, our thanks to Anna and Adrian. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
We're now going on to item four, which is the future of the Health Commissioning in Coventry and Warwickshire. I've got down that this is by, the presentation is being given by Sarah Raystrick. Is that correct?
That's right. I've got eight, Chair, I've got Adrian and Anna Abley in the background should we, should we need them, but.
Okay, well, over to you then, Sarah.
Thank you very much. So for those of you that, that don't know me, I'm Sarah Raystrick. I'm a GP actually practising in Coventry, but I'm Chair of the Coventry and Rugby Clinical Commissioning Group. My, my counterparts, my counterparts for Warwickshire, so Warwickshire North and, and South Warwickshire are both in clinical practice today, which is why you have me. But I do represent rugby as well, so I, I am part of, of Warwickshire. So I know that many of you will have heard this presentation before. And so I in no way want to be going over old ground. I think I'm, I'm very happy to, to present briefly and then hopefully open this up for any questions or comments. What I'm really looking for is, we are, we are seeking, you'll see in the paper that's provided, we're seeking your support today for our application to merge to a single CCG. I think the paper summarises things hopefully quite, quite well for, for you. A little bit of, bit of background. As again, as you will know, there are three clinical commissioning groups across our patch at the moment. And we are in the process of hoping to merge to become one clinical commissioner over the whole of Coventry and Warwickshire. I think Adrian and Anna highlighted quite nicely in their presentation how actually we've been working very well together and showing some of the advantages of working in a single way during the coronavirus situation, especially at its height, when we really worked as a system very well, providing a system solution that was then delivered at individual places. And it, it may go beyond your noticing, but just the fact that we've had Adrian as the, the Chair of, sorry, as the Accountable Officer for for Coventry and Rugby CCG co-presenting a paper with, with Anna Hargrave from, from South Warwickshire. Just working together incredibly, incredibly well. So we are moving towards working as a single commissioner. I won't labour the point about the history, but we've got the long-term plan, which was announced in January 19, which said that we would be moving towards an integrated care system in all areas of the country by 2021. And as clinical commissioners, we thought about how we would be best placed to support this from the commissioning perspective. And after engagement with staff, members, the public and our partners over the course of sort of from the end of 2018 through to the spring of, of 19, we, we got some ideas together and presented our members, which are the GP practices with three options. Either do nothing, work closer together but not formally merge statutory organisations, or merge the three CCGs. We took that to a vote and we had a turnout across Coventry and Warwickshire of 74%. And of that, which is a good turnout, and of that turnout, the vote was in favour of merger. And you can see the, the breakdown of results in your paper. Moving on from there, what we needed to do was pull together quite a, a large pack of information which was to be presented to NHS E, NHS I, to formally ask them to support and agree that we could merge as CCGs. That work is, is ongoing and with a view to merge on the 1st of April 2021, we have a deadline to submit all our documents by the 30th of September. And we have a pre-submission date where they can look at it and make some early amendments on the 21st of August. So that's a deadline that we're working to. The other key thing to progress this would be that we are in the process of appointing a single accountable officer across all the three CCGs. That is happening irrespective of the agreement from NHS E I to merger. We want a single accountable officer. And we are at the stage at the moment where we've long listed applicants and we're going ahead to interview on the 20th of August. So just looking at point 5.2 on the paper, which talks about the benefits of merger, that we believe that there, there are many, but one of the key ones that I think you've highlighted your interest in today already is about population health. And one of the key things there is about health inequalities. And we believe that we'll be able to best deliver equitable health for our population by merging of the CCGs. And this aligns our principle, it aligns the CCG's principles with the Health and Wellbeing Concordat that we're part of. And I think it's, it's just a, our step, our piece of the jigsaw to moving towards a far more integrated system to deliver better healthcare for our population. So essentially, this is something that may be seen as a little bureaucratic, considering all the very important clinical things we've just been discussing before. But I think it's vital to shape our healthcare system going forwards. Moving further forwards, and once we have an agreement to merge, then we are absolutely aware that it is, it is vital to engage yourselves and our wider community and our stakeholders in the shape of the provision of healthcare and how we form our clinical strategy and perhaps even the form, some of the forms that the organised, the merged organisation takes. So we're well aware of that. But at this point in time, we're really looking for any questions or comments you have now to help us with our submission. And also to, as I said, to seek your support for the application to merge to a single CCG. So I'll leave it there, Chair, but I, I'm very happy if you want to field questions. And as I said, Adrian and Anna are on the line still as well.
Thank you very much. So I just have one point to kick off with. Your deadline.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm conscious of the fact that it took nearly two years for us to get stroke through, through the NHS England. And, and this is a far bigger issue, you know.
Point well made, yes.
You know, I'm, I'm, I hope that you're, you know, you, you achieve it, but it, it does seem a bit tight to me.
So, so absolutely, absolutely. And, and your point's well made on some of the, let's say we've learnt lessons about our processes in the past. I absolutely am confident that the deadline to submit the, the documents that we need to NHS England by, for pre-submission and then actual submission are, are well within our grasp. We're working very hard on that. And the documentation that I and a subgroup are seeing on a regular basis, the work being done is, is actually quite, quite phenomenal, but is, we are on track. If you're referring to the long-term plan and an integrated care system by 2021, then I think, yes, we may well, we may well be working towards that for a little longer. But merger by the 1st of April, I think, is absolutely doable.
Well, I think that will be good news. Margaret.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I mean, it does seem logical, but I've got a couple of questions. And I actually refer to the point you just spoken about, Sarah. So under 5.2, the first, the first issue there, sorry, the first benefit as it's listed. It is rather counterintuitive that by making the organisation bigger, we'll be able to give more local support. That doesn't seem right to me. And I, I am really concerned. I'm resisting all urges to talk about the history of this and how often we have rearranged CCGs over all the years that I've been involved. And we've been here before and we've gone back to local, more local CCGs for that very reason. And therefore I have to say, before I can give my support to this, I need much more detail on that. How will it actually help to address the local issues and health inequalities? Why is it better than what we've got now? You know, in what way will it help? I just don't understand. And I've got one other question about money. So is this going to be immediately that all the CCG funding gets thrown into one pot? And then is somehow there's some decisions about how it's allocated? And if so, on what basis will it be allocated? Or are the allocations to the central CCG going to be earmarked as they come through the door? That's a really important question for us because, you know, we've got obviously different needs in different areas and we need to make sure that they'll be addressed. And how can I put it? Some areas won't just take up all of the show, so the rest have gotten on. So that's, so those two things I need answers on before I can say, yes, I support it.
Brilliant. Thank you. I mean, huge, huge questions there that you're raising are the sort of questions about, you know, this proportional universalism and how we, we apportion the resources that, that we've got. I'll let Adrian talk to the, the specific finance point. The question, and I agree with you, that at first glance, it does sound counterintuitive to centralise to then, to then deliver locally. But actually, we've seen examples of that working really well, where we have taken what, what we take, we look at the health inequalities and we look at the health needs of the population as a whole. We then say the outcome that we want for all of our population is to improve, let's take for example, to improve a diabetes target across the whole of Coventry and Warwickshire. Now, for some areas, that may take very little work and need very little resource. For other areas, it may be about addressing issues from a public health perspective about food and diet. And for others, it may be much more related to access to hospitals. And by devolving that to a place-based level and allowing the people who know a lot about the individual places to make the decisions to implement what is needed for their population to achieve the same outcome is, is the model that, that we would be working on.
Can I just say, Chair, sorry to come in, before Adrian comes in, the issue we've got is granularity. In North Warwickshire, we tend to suffer through averages across Warwickshire. If you look at averages across Warwickshire, most things are good, really good. If you look at not just North Warwickshire, but areas within North Warwickshire, and there are other areas across Warwickshire, of course, as well, then it's not good. So it's all about, so you might look at diabetes and say, across Coventry and Warwickshire, actually on average, it's not bad. But if you look at different areas, it's pretty bad. So it's what the granularity is that is really important.
And, and that's why we are working really closely. This isn't, so whilst I'm presenting now as the CCG, we work, we want to be working as a health and social care partnership where we're really looking to say, what does the JSNA at individual wards tell us? What do we know about those particular places? And delivery through primary care networks helps us with that as they are often much more locally based and people know the absolute need. Because I agree with you that i- if you just take Warwickshire, then maybe everything is rosy. But when we look at individual areas, there are definitely real pockets that we need to, to focus on, whilst not ignoring those that look like they have good outcomes because we need to maintain those good outcomes as well.
Thank you. Adrian, you wanted to come in?
Yeah, I think, I think that the key bit for me, and, and certainly I remember talking to the members a lot around this. And one of the messages that certainly hits home and we, we can't forget is our, our running cost allowance, so the budget we have for management is, is going to be reduced by 20%. That's, that's, that's a given. And so how you save that 20% and where you take that 20% from is, is crucial. And, and whether we like it or not, running three governing bodies, doing three sets of accounts, having duplications on the kind of really senior posts means if you keep all those, then the people you end up having to save the money on are those people that are walking, working in the places. So they're your, they're your transformation manager that works on the IT thing in the GP surgery. And, and those people are priceless and are, when you speak to our members, they're the people they, they cannot do without. They're the people that make the difference on the ground. And I think to keep, I mean, Jill's on the list, it's, it's a tricky one for Jill and I to win the call, but to, to keep two of us and pay two salaries and to, I mean, between Jill and I would have done three AGMs by the end of September, we'll have signed off three sets of accounts, we'll have two finance directors doing two different ledgers and, and, and we, there's duplication of some of the admin stuff. So, so to really keep the people that help in the right places, that, that is really, really local. And so when I'm talking to members, this is, you know, it's, it's Alison that comes to my GP on a Monday morning and helps with my meds optimisation and IT. That's the person that makes the difference. And and in order to, to make sure we keep that, then actually managing the 20% reduction through reducing the kind of more senior overheads is, is the only way to go. And we had a, certainly in Warwickshire North, we had a, a kind of a visual representation of that where we asked our members to say, if you were going to save 20% and this is the, this is the makeup of the costs you have, but you have to keep two, two exec teams and three governing. but you have to keep two exec teams and three governing bodies, could you do it in a way that would make you happy? And not a single one could. And some of the impacts it would have had on other staff was huge. So I think the combination of making sure we have an absolute commitment to place and understanding at ward level is something we need to do going forward. We needed to do it anyway, even within CCGs, and that's something we can be held to account to. But to reduce 20% of our running costs and keep our current infrastructure would be, I can guarantee, is absolutely impossible. Yeah, no, I was going to move on to the allocation point, so on that, I'm happy to.
No, that's fine.
And then in relation to allocations, again, it was another excellent question, and it was the one that came up from the members most of all. So Jill and I did a letter alongside all the chairs, basically saying that the allocation breakdown, as we knew it for the next five years, and we had five years allocation at that time, would stay in the places that it was earmarked for. And we had, pre-COVID, we had a five-year set of allocations by CCG. So we knew with a level of certainty which was going to each area, and a commitment that that stays the case. So those areas that have higher growth levels will keep those higher growth levels within the allocation. I mean, it is fair to say, this was all in a pre-COVID world, and we're not entirely sure our allocations going for anyone now. And heaven only knows what the Treasury is toying with now to try and make sure that they can get this for. But certainly that commitment to make sure that no place lost out. And you remember the history, Margaret, but so do a lot of my members, and they were absolutely all over me on that point. So there are certainly assurances there, so I hope that helps.
It does. Sorry, Chairman, just to put in again, it does help, and it's reassuring. I can see it's reassuring to give people a five-year span. However, the other side of that coin is, we are promising to address health inequalities. And resources have never been directed particularly well for health inequalities. There's a conundrum here. People need reassurance. But the areas that really need to be addressed will need more resource. And somehow that balance has got to be done. And it's never been done properly in any structure that's been put in place before. Hopefully, this one will, but it's going to take an awful lot of very carefully handling to ride those two horses.
I agree.
Carry on, Adrian.
No, I completely agree. I think, but again, I do think the best way we've been able to do that is to allow us to have the right kind of infrastructure to make sure we can target the right resource at the right. I mean, interestingly, in an older, we probably all would have employed a third of a person in population health. Well, we can, you know, by being big enough, we can have some dedicated focus on making sure we do the allocative process right as well.
Okay, thank you. Now, I've got six members still waiting to speak, so Keith?
Thank you very much, Chair. I laughed when someone said a little bureaucratic because I've always noticed quite a bit of bureaucracy in the system. Obviously, it needs to be there to be accountable. But it has taken an awful long while to do the stroke service. The longer we take to do these changes, the more we spend on the cost. And the estate strategy, where we build new GPs, which is a thing I've been passionate about for a decade, that is, yeah, it's been eight years for my GP. Margaret Bell's GP's been five years in the pipeline. We have to do this change to get rid of a lot of the duplication, but we've got a history of not achieving stuff and it being a right dog's dinner. I've been to some of the hospital board meetings in common, where you've got two board meetings happening in one. So I totally get we need to change, but we also need to actually deliver for the public. And the big fear with a Coventry and Warwickshire super CCG is, do we get these estate strategies delivered? When it might not be important to a very large CCG that it looks after people and went into their heart cell. So we need a step change in how we're performing. And also, when I go to CCG board meetings, there's very little happening about the lay members of the board, the public involvement. We do need a step change in actually how responsive this bigger CCG is to the local demands. So in any bid going forward to make a super CCG, we need to sort out the representation because it can't just be a lay member to tick box exercise. We actually need the new organisation to actually be achieving and driving these changes we need. Because I can't believe how long my GP has been in the process. I can't believe how long stroke service changes have taken. And it all takes money. If we actually had an efficient organisation that actually decided it needed to do something, looked at the evidence and did it within a year, it would actually be a cheaper organisation than the one that keeps faffing around and thinking, shall we do this, shall we do that? So I'm not keen to support a super CCG yet. I want to hear how it will be more decisive and get things done. And yeah, I do have a fear that it is dominated by the GPs. And we've got, I think it comes back to Margaret's question about allocations. We have a massive under-registration in Inverness, for example. People have moved to Inverness from Coventry and kept their GP in Coventry. And the same thing's happening in rugby. So if you look at the GP registrations, they do not match population at all. Coventry has probably 20,000 more GP registrations than population because all the students and all the people who moved out of Coventry to Warwickshire. So does all that loss cause us structural problems as well? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Keith, anybody want to come back on that?
Well, I think, thank you for, you know, highlighting the issues that we have. And I would absolutely say to you that I think it's really important, and as you would well do within the council, that actually we have to get the absolute balance right between good governance and, as you say, the sort of, you know, the faffing around. And I would absolutely take on board your points and say that that's something, as Chair, that I'm really keen to do. At the moment, for any decision that we want to take that crosses our borders, stroke is one of the things that's been highlighted several times because that impacted on the whole area. At the moment, we've got three sets of senior officers, we've got three governing bodies. We need approval at all the different levels, and obviously, we're layering on different nuances. If that's done at one board level, I think we will get much smoother and better process. We would absolutely be mindful of, I think, mindful of the small areas where you're talking about individual practices, individual pockets of need, because we'll be looking at that from a place-based level. So a Warwickshire North, a South Warwickshire, a rugby and a Coventry place base. And there'll be very strong advocates for that within place. Interesting points. I mean, the student population is definitely a population, and so we do need to cater for them. But yeah, I hope that we would be able to reduce our both overheads, but also the speed of decision-making by having one streamlined organisation. And really keen going forwards that, you know, we're held to account on that, that if you don't see progress or that you see that it's not, then clearly these forums are ideal for that to be highlighted to us because it is vitally important, not for... It's important for the GPs that you mentioned, but it's not just about that, is it? It's important for our population's health that we get the right decisions made for the right places in a sensible amount of time.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Health Watch Warwickshire is a patient voice organisation. So I think in that context, we would probably be neutral about whether this is a good idea or not because most patients have no idea what a CCG is anyway, nor indeed what it does. And what I would say is that as an organisation, we'll be looking for inequalities, both in terms of service provision and outcomes, to be more, to be hard baked into this. And we'll be looking for assurances in that regard. But also that the patient voice will be built in at every level, at place, at primary care network and at local level. And I think you need all of those, and it talks to Margaret Bell's point earlier on. If we're not hearing from patients locally, we will have no idea whether what we are doing is landing properly. So we do need that patient voice built in at every level, and it needs to be guaranteed that it will.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
A good point.
I would just like, so picking up from Chris's point and also Keith's, I'm sorry that I didn't allude to about the lay membership. I think we are in the process of writing a new draft constitution, which we have to. That is, as I'm sure, again, you're aware, through local authority, there are some things that are set down in statute, things that have to be in it, and orders of things that we have to do. We're hoping to increase the lay membership from what we absolutely have to do in statute in the constitution that we've proposed. And I would like to give, as this is on record, and not just a nod really, to the fact that I think at the moment, we do have two strong lay members for patient and public involvement. We've got Gemma Nostorica-Davies, who has come on board for Warwickshire North and Coventry and Rugby, and is an absolute star to be able to always champion and bring back to inequalities in patients at our board meetings and committee meetings that she chairs. And there is Catherine, whose surname escapes me, I'm afraid, for South Warwickshire, who absolutely champions the patients and brings back patients. Catherine White, who absolutely brings back to the patient at our meetings and does not let us forget that, absolutely rightly so. So there is that involvement there. But Chris, absolutely, involvement of patients at all levels is going to be... The public voice at all levels is really important. And I think we're linking with Health Watch Warwickshire and Health Watch Coventry to look at new and innovative ways we can perhaps do that, moving away from some of the traditional forums that GPs have used, because that doesn't really seem to work as well as we'd like it to. So really glad to get your involvement in that.
Thank you, Sarah. Judy?
Thank you, Chair. As a clinician of, dare I say, 40 years plus, I've seen lots of various mergers and doing things differently, and the majority have worked well. Obviously, I'm new to this forum, but from what I read before the meeting, the main driver for this does seem to be financial. And obviously, there's a lot of efficiencies that can be achieved in putting three leadership teams into one. But I am very concerned about the potential loss of being able to respond to local needs. And I think since I put my hand upon this, that there's been more talk following Margaret and Keith's comments. But really, my main thing was to reinforce my support of Margaret and Keith's comments, really. There are... Often, when something becomes one large organisation, there is that global view, and you lose the local knowledge and ability to respond to the needs. So it's just, again, I'm just flagging up what I'm concerned about.
Thank you, Judy. Gerry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, like some others, we've seen this come around and around. You know, the chairs get moved every five to six years within the NHS. And so we're going back to sort of everywhere. And NHS England, of course, are driving this through with their long-term plan. So my starting point is, is this going to happen? It is. Is it going to happen within the timescales? Probably, because there's a driver from Treasury announcement to make savings because of everything else that's going on. So I don't make the comparison between this and, say, stroke services. I think they're slightly two different issues, which sort of clouds this up. This is an organisational bureaucracy putting in. So it's going to happen to it. I suppose coming from rugby, one of the fortunate things is that the forum there has been working on place and place plans quite a lot. So I'm quite hopeful in that sense that the place plan, for me, being a local person, is actually crucial and how that actually fits into the jigsaw than resources. I'm not a fan of the JSNA work that's been done by public health, which has been known, you know, the local waves, because they don't fit to the geography of local government at all, you know. And putting one side of a town with another side of town is different. So there are issues, but that needs to be sorted out at place. From a bigger strategic point of view, the Health and Wellbeing Board have got to step up. And that's who I'll be holding to account over this. If this is not working right, the Health and Wellbeing Board is the place for me where even like the guns will have to be lined up against because they'll be setting the overall strategy and the overall chapters that'll be worked to. And then sitting below that will be the place plans. So it'll be interesting to see how they operate and with an integrated care system coming in alongside that to do that. But crucial to all this has been said is actually ensuring the voices are heard all the way through the system, really. Same, Mr. Joe. I mean, that's my starting point, is it's going to happen. So it's then how do we actually hold it to account? What do we do to make sure it's going to work properly? As place plans, I think, are crucial, and we need to think about how we're going to hold that to account. But sitting alongside that then is the Health and Wellbeing Board, you know, because they're becoming a more powerful body in relation to this with the health and wellbeing plan. So we need to sort of ensure that they're accountable and can be scrutinised.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Gerry. Helen?
Thanks, Wallace. And sorry, my dogs have just started to bark just as I turned off the microphone. Apologies if they carry on. I think my point has been answered to an extent by Sarah. So I was going to bring up the issue of local accountability and lay membership on the boards. So I know at the moment, across the CCGs that we've got, we've got a number of people that are lay members. Sarah, I hope we're not going to suddenly go from, let's say, 10 lay members to something like three or four. I think that would be a real concern. So could you just clarify? And I'll turn my microphone off so you can't hear my dogs.
Sarah?
I'm just...
You're muted.
Sorry, I was just going to do a quick head count of the lay members that we have because we do share some across Coventry and Rugby and Warwickshire North and South Warwickshire, I believe, have got three lay members. But I think Anna can correct me if I'm wrong there. Within our new constitution, we would actually, as things stand at the moment, be looking for three lay members with four GPs. Trying to, so we would keep a clinical majority, which is something that our members felt was vitally important. The more lay members we have, then the more GP representatives we'd also need on the governing body. So at the moment, we were looking for someone definitely that had the... We need someone that can chair, someone that is the deputy chair of the CCG. And they normally will be chair of the audit committee. We need someone to chair the finance and performance committee. And that's all we need in statute. We've asked for a third member within our draft constitution to say that we do want someone representing patient and public involvement and wider lay representation. So I don't think that is going to... That answers your... I hope that answers your question, but I'm prepared for a follow-up if you need to.
Yeah, I mean, I know that under the Health and Social Care Act at the moment, we have to have lay membership, don't we? So we'll still be, we'll still have to be under that, I guess. I mean, until I see your actual plans, I don't think I can support the merger until I see exactly what's going to happen in relation to that.
Okay. So at the moment, the stage we're at with that and the lay membership is that we have a draft constitution. We've, there is a standard constitution that CCGs can adopt, which has been recently revised. We've got an expert in constitutional matters helping us out at the moment. And we've had working groups to work on a draft constitution. And as I say, you rightly say that the legalities would say that we have to have two lay members on a CCG governing body. And our draft at the moment, which has to be approved and voted for by members, currently says that we will have three lay members on our... Three voting lay members, but there are other people who are co-opted onto the governing body but don't have a voting capacity, such as, yeah, Adrian, you've got your hand up.
Thanks, Adrian.
Oh, and I was just going as well, the other thing that we can make sure happens, and I think as the point made by the crew speaker around using the Health and Wellbeing Board and place is to make sure we get good engagement, good lay member representation, good patient representation into the voice of place. the voice of place. So that's really important to make sure that's over and above what you'd see as a kind of traditional just governing body. So vast majority of stuff will be, will be done at place. And so making sure we get the voices at that level. And then I think that starts to answer some of Marv's earlier questions around, it's fine having an average for Warwickshire, but what about this ward?
Thank you. Pam?
Thank you, Jim. I have to say that big is not always beautiful. And it does concern, I mean, I understand the economic reason behind this. I do understand that. But I'm always afraid that that means cuts. And it's usually the frontline staff that get cut. And the other thing that concerns me is, we all recognise that the NHS is not the speediest decision maker. And it doesn't necessarily follow that you, if you have a big area, you're going to get decisions made faster. And the other thing that's concerning me is how this will affect the service delivery areas. I mean, are we going to be told further down the line that this clinic and that clinic is going to have to close because it's more economical to have one clinic in a given area, which leads us to another problem in a rural county, the transportation system. So I think there are a lot of, lot of things that we have to think about when we're talking about a bigger organisation, because that's what we are talking about, instead of the localised organisation. So I think, like most of the other councillors that have spoken, I'm a bit iffy about this, to say the least, and I'd like to hear a lot more.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm wondering whether it's worth a future session on place. Yeah. So that we can really get across what place is supposed to be. So actually, this is a, this is a smaller CCG overall, and the kind of the back office. So this is taking money out of some of the back office functions and the non-frontline staff. And what we're doing to make sure that is to focus on, on place. Now, I don't know all of, all of Warwickshire, but I know that the Rugby Place, and Gerry was mentioned earlier, is very local and talks about absolute specific rugby issues. And I think historically, they may have, may have felt that Coventry and Rugby CCG was too Coventry-centric, and the Rugby Place has started to at least start that journey. I think certainly Warwickshire North Place, I think, is working tremendously well. And we've started to take some of our CCG staff and put them into that place dynamic. It's chaired by David Eltrington. We have staff that work across both the commissioner and the provider and the GP membership. And so when I, when I see some of the early signs of place working, those meetings are amazing, because you've got people that know their areas very well. They're talking about very specific bits. And this is all about facilitating place for us and making savings in the, in the back office areas and the back office functions that you'd, you'd want us to be saving rather than, as you've suggested, services. So I, I do wonder whether, and I mean, I could talk about place for hours, honestly, or days. So I wonder whether it's worth a session on what place looks like in the context of a, of a, a smaller, more strategic CCG that's not doing everything thrice.
Yeah.
I think that will be very useful, Adrian. And I think we will take you up on that, because there are a number of issues, as you've heard, that members are uncertain about regarding the, the future. So I've got, still got a couple more speakers. John Bowman, John?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's two years ago that I attended a stakeholder meeting in North Warwickshire. I think it was in the Chess Building in Nuneaton, where this was discussed. And we were asked to indicate our support or otherwise for this. We indicated support for it. And the only thing that's happened since then that does give me some concern is the primary care network development and how far that has gone in giving strong representation to the patient voice. Because I have a feeling that the clinical lead for each of the primary care networks doesn't have a relationship with the patients that they, they cover as a primary network. So I'm looking for some indication that if a primary care network has a patient forum for each one, it always seemed logical to me that if there was a clinical lead, there should be an opportunity for patients and the clinical lead to come together and to discuss real local issues, you know, physiotherapy not being available within easy reach, having to always go into hospital and get some support, all that really local stuff that you need to, to work on. And the developments across, some sort of prescribing seems to be a primary care network issue, maybe important to doctors, I don't know, might maybe important to pharmacists. But the patient, be quiet. That's my wristwatch.
Sarah, do you want to come back?
Becky Ma's wristwatch.
Come back, Sarah.
Yeah, I think, yes, I mean, I wasn't at that meeting, but I remember the equivalent in rugby and in Coventry. So just in terms of timeframe there, very quickly, we, there are only, there's a national submission date once a year, when you can submit paperwork to merge your, to merge your CCGs. And so that's why there appears to be a delay from the meeting you were at until now. And we're working towards that. What you're saying is great about primary care networks. That's been a huge development. Primary care networks are now, have really, have really taken off and are given a lot of local ownership at a small, between 30 and up to 80,000 patient base, and allowing primary care to focus on the needs of that population. I can speak for my primary care network and let you know that whilst we still continue to hold our individual practice patient participation group, we also hold a network-wide group. We've been doing that, we did that on a virtual and come-in platform, whichever people wanted, held at the same time, live streamed. We now do that all virtually, obviously, with Covid. And across our network, it's led by our clinical director and it's led by the deputy. And there we had, last time, we had about 90, 90 patients at that, which actually is far more than the sum of what we would have had at our individual practice PPGs. The other thing that we're doing, which may be of interest to you, and actually, we would value your support with, is actually, again, my, my network is working at our local councillors' forum. So when our local councillor meets with members of the public, we are going along to those to listen to see if there's any health-related issues, to be able to input there as a PCN. So rather than sort of the traditional you come to us, we're trying to work out how we can best engage that population. And as you say, find out what really matters to the patient, rather than what as the doctor we believe matters to you. And so really keen to do that. I know Health Watch are not the only people there, but we're working with Health Watch, but very keen to work with you as councillors and representatives of your population to say, if you've got forums and you're talking to people, the networks would be very keen to get involved with that. We don't want to reinvent things and make the public come to get more meetings.
Well, that sounds like an excellent response, except that the structure around Hawkington, Bedworth, and a little part of Whitestone, doesn't happen. And I've been longing for a report to come to our councillors' forums that deals with health in the same way as we deal with policing and crime. You know, it's, it's a given that, that the reports about the local performances and the primary care network performance could also be a matter for public debate as well. So, but I've got to say, it doesn't exist. What you've described doesn't exist around me in this area of Nuneaton and Bedworth.
Well, I can take that up with you outside and very happy to take that to your place lead GP and see what she can, she can do about it for you.
Thank you, Sarah. Keith?
Yeah, thank you. Very concerned about the comment that there'll be seven members on this board, three lay members and four GPs, because sharing that with Coventry, that would seem likely to be a four to three split, which me, I'm not sure how that sort of works. And particularly if meetings with Coventry are very Coventry-centric, I think the voice of Warwickshire might be a bit small in that. So I don't know if that's something we can look at, how we ensure Warwickshire, which is quite a lot bigger than Coventry in terms of population, does maintain a good voice in this new structure. And I agree with John about the point about the taking local health stuff back to the, what is the community forums, like the police do. I don't know if we need to make a recommendation, Chair, at the end of this, whether we're noting it or noting this report with concerns. But I think it's that representation I think we need to get more clarity on. Thank you.
Yeah, well, there is a recommendation, Keith, as you can see, but I shall come to that when everybody's had their opportunity to speak.
Can I just respond? I'm sorry, Chair, just on that point, one very quick point, that for the first term of office on the governing body, there will be three Warwickshire GPs and one Coventry GP. So I don't think Warwickshire need to be, to be overly concerned on their GP representation. Each place will have a GP rep, so Rugby, Warwickshire North, South Warwickshire, and Coventry gets one. So we, we are trying initially to make sure that that happens. In the long term, it will be the best people for the job representing a wider area as we, we become one. But initially, first term of three years, Warwickshire will definitely outnumber Coventry.
Thank you for that clarification. So I've got one more speaker, and then I shall draw the meeting to a close. Judy? I've got you down to speak, Judy.
Sorry, I was on mute. I really was just wanting to say again my concern about the reduced lay representation.
Oh, okay.
But I think that's been talked through now.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, a big thank you to Sarah and Anna and Adrian for the presentations today. But we do have a recommendation to make. As you can see from your papers, the recommendation is that we support the proposed changes in the structure of the clinical commissioning groups in Coventry and Warwickshire. Now, my summing up of your comments this morning is that we really would like some more information before pinning our support down to the restructuring. Adrian has offered that we have a further, that they're prepared to come to a further meeting for giving further information on the place group areas. Now, is it, is it the members' position that we have a further meeting with Adrian on place before we make a final decision on our, our support, et cetera?
Yes, Chairman, I certainly support that.
Let me put it another way. Anybody against?
Chair, I'm just wondering about delay, whether that helps the process that we're trying to go through here. There's been a mention of an August date. And I'm wondering how that ties in with the August date that Adrian has been talking about.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I appreciate that, John. My intention would be to try and move this forward as quickly as possible. But obviously, we do need to speak to Adrian and others regarding how quickly we could get this together. Jo, is that, are you wishing?
It is a hand, yes. May I just say, I don't have any objection to making a decision now. Forgive me for being a dissenter, but I think I've read a huge amount, because I'm fortunate to sit on so many different committees, that I'm comfortable with making a decision. But then I do sit on place, if that's how one describes.
Yeah, no, it's a fair comment. I mean, like, I like Gerry, we like, you know, we, I accept that this is going to go ahead. But it still means that members themselves, who are representing the electorate, do need to actually be comfortable with, with the way forward. Gerry?
Yeah, a bit like John, really. Just want to like to hear a bit about delays, what happens. Also, the recommendation, we could say, yeah, we note the comments and concerns from the, from the committee and request that, you know, that we have this further extra meeting to clarify place. Again, fortunate I sit on place and rugby and be involved with it quite heavily. So again, I know it's going to happen, but I'm more interested in actually that extra governance bit of holding Health and Wellbeing Board to account and place and getting into some of the nitty-gritty, really, of that side of it. But I just, just want that clarification on delay.
Yeah, I agree. Gerry, Kate?
Is it possible to say we support the principle, but we'd like some of the details ironing out of that? Because then it gives them a, an imprincible thing to say to government that, yeah, fundamentally, Warwickshire doesn't mind going into this thing, but actually, some of the, the governance aspects and the communication aspects, you want to ensure rights.
Okay, Helen?
Yeah, I think it is going to go ahead. But I would feel more reassured if we could have that extra meeting on place, just so that it would delay some of our fears and the issues that we've brought up today. A lot of us have brought up very similar issues. And I think it would be good if we could have a meeting as soon as possible to just go, go through that.
Yeah, thank you. Well, what I, what I shall do, if you're in agreement, is that we will arrange something in pretty short order and discuss the issues that have been raised. Hopefully, they will be solved by Adrian's offer to come back on, on the, on place. And just say that we, we, we are concerned about certain areas, and we would, we need further information before throwing our full support behind the proposal. Are you happy if I come up with some sort of words along the lines of Gerry and Keith and John to reflect what the members' concerns are this morning?
Yes.
Are you happy?
Yep.
Yeah, yep, fine, yep.
Okay, well, once again, thank you, thank you, Sarah, Anna, and Adrian. Thank you for what you've done this morning. It's been very much appreciated, the amount of work and effort and detail that you have gone into your presentations. And we look forward to meeting you again very soon. Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.